Regular meeting of Starbuck City Council for April tenth. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You call a roll, please, Joan.
Mayor Slunson.
Here.
Counselor Gorder's gone, Counselor Taves gone, Counselor Bockel.
Here.
Counselor Christensen.
Okay. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda to approve the agenda, claims for payment, and approve the minutes from the March thirteenth council meeting.
And I've added two items to the original agenda that was in your packet that highlighted in yellow. I got another one here. Anyway, the first one is to approve a grant agreement for an extension of time for an airport zoning ordinance, and the other one is to talk about a quote for programmable timer for the, or, yep, keypad for the community center.
So is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
No.
If not, I'll make a motion that the consent agenda be approved.
I'll second.
With the amendments that Joan mentioned?
And I'll second.
Okay. So the mayor made a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes mentioned by Clerk Treasurer Kirkley, seconded by Counselor Womack Bockel. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve or oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Roger Eberg to talk about adopting a park shelter program. And I guess I, I guess I told Roger that the council has approved his idea and wants him to go forward, and we're working on an agreement form and and a request to adopt a shelter, so, so we're working on that.
So, yeah, I really don't have anything new. All of you should have probably, I think I gave, I think I left three pages off with the idea that that's exactly what you do is go through it and decide on a couple of things like, you know, if there's a renewal time that, you know, if it's a two-year period that you adopt with a chance to be the first to renew, or something to that effect, or if that's not long enough, whatever you guys think. And then the only other thing that I think that, that has been discussed a little bit is, you know, what, what can, what do, what do you as a sponsor get out of it? And I think, I mean, in my mind, it's just simply more or less a plaque that, that is either on the gable end as it shows, or depending on the shelter, there might be a better place for it somewhere or another. And so that's really, you know, other than that and the application, what I gave you to get a start with, because the city will have to come up with their own form, I suppose. That's, for us, for instance, a class of sixty-eight, I've had ten replies that they want to either donate money to doing it because they live in Florida or wherever, or they count me in, you know, when you're seventy-two, you don't know how long, how long you're going to be counted in or what you're going to get done. But the only other thing I have that I brought with tonight is, I've taken pictures of the whole community over the years, and so I do have some photos that kind of show that some of the smaller things that could be done, you know, and the need that's there to a degree. Some of the pictures are from 2015, some of them are from last year. And so, on that, I won't take up any time with that, but if afterwards, if you want to take a quick look at some of those pictures, I can show you the types of things that I would think that we could do as a sponsor of the shelter without coming to the city and asking. And then some of those photos may show some things that maybe you got to ask the city or have the city involved. So unless you guys have questions, that's what I got.
When you say like a plaque to put on that, are you asking the city to pay for it?
No, 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 I think, I, if you adopt the shelter, you're responsible for what you're going to put on it. If you, I mean, if you want to in the, in the minutes or in the, in the application, if you want to put a suggested suggestion, or if you want me to, I would think you'd just go over to Palmer Creations, like if we were going to do the shelter, shelter number two, that gable end that faces the highway, you know, it's probably a three-twelve pitch gable, so I would either think it will just be a round deal up there or something that'll follow the gable and, and simply say something like sponsored by the class of nineteen sixty-eight, SHS class of nineteen sixty-eight, or something to that effect.
So I'm just wondering if we want some consistency in the park and not having, you know, different shapes throughout the different shelters, like every shelter has the same type of plaque? Is that something that we should get worded into the adopt a shelter program? Because you could have-
I think that makes sense, Dane.
Yeah.
Or at least, I mean, the shelters are different.
Yeah.
So certainly there could be a difference in the size or the shape, I mean, of it to a degree. But I do think, I don't think, at least I know that if we're the first to adopt, that it won't be much more than what the Lions have on shelter four. Simply, the, the real goal is, and if you look at these pictures, and I'm not criticizing, believe me, I'm not criticizing what the city, you can, if you look at the picture, you can see that the park's well groomed and stuff, but you can see why isn't that painted? Or why isn't that this, or why isn't that this? And it, and they're daily tasks. I mean, the truth is, is if, if two people got together a couple of days a year and went down there and spent the day doing some painting and whatever, you could take away a lot of those little eyeshores-
Right.
-that are, that are there. I'd like to think it'd be a lot more than that. But at the same time, I don't see how this could do anything but improve the shelter, so. Okay?
Roger, do you think there should be a length to the agreement, or?
Yeah, that's what I said just a minute ago or so. Is that the, on page one, under other topics conversation, it says renewable, renewal of sponsorship agreement duration. And so that's the idea is, if you guys think it should be two years-
What do you, what do you suggest?
Well, I think, I think it could be every, I mean, it certainly could be every two years, but with the right that you're first in line to renew it. But I mean, if you, and I think the city, if they want to say, well, there's, you know, you're not doing your job, we're going to put it up for another adoption. I think the city should have the right to do that. I mean, again, the idea of this is not to put your name on it and do nothing.
Yeah.
And so if that's what we feel the, the sponsors doing, I think you can feel free to put a cancellation clause in there if you want.
Yeah, I think most agreements have a, an out for both parties.
Sure, absolutely, I think, I mean, ideally, you'd like to think that a group that would do it would, would go five years. But two years might not be a bad idea. Like I said, we're seventy-two, you know, and then just to let you, what started this whole thing to a degree, I, I've had the idea for a few years, but the fact that we've, and I've said this, is have our fifty-fifty year class reunion. So it's a good time for me to, to ask and find out. In, in announcing that reunion and on Facebook or wherever I put it, I kind of asked if there were other reunions being planned. And, you know, there's a forty, a forty-five, a fifty, a fifty-five, and a sixty-year-old class reunion being planned this summer. So that's five classes there. I don't, I don't think that the band standard is more than a, more than, you know, it would be nice to see something bigger, get a hold of that. Or a couple, or a group of classes, get a hold of that or something. Because that requires some work. And then again, if, you see on page two, if we see something that we think definitely needs to be corrected, and we all know that there is stuff that definitely needs to be corrected, then that comes to the city, that if you need to redo something on, you know, construction-wise or whatever, that would be a suggestion to the city, and then I would think just a discussion as to, do you want us to chase, chase people for it or round up money for it? Or, you know, I think it can be a pretty loose that way, but I think if you identify the problems that are there, and they're there, I can try, I can show you on your pictures, then, then they'll, you're one step closer to fixing them. So, all right?
Thank you.
Your check's in the mail.
Next item on the agenda is Nick Kuss with Widseth.
Hello, I'm Nick Kuss with Widseth. Just going to give a quick update on a couple of things that we're working on. The 2020 road project, we've still not received final numbers back from MINDOT there at central office still, from what I understand. That's the information that they've given me, so that's, that's the information I've got to give. Soon as we get them, we'll, we'll hit the ground running with those. For the project to replace the lighthouse in the marina, Braun has the soil borings completed, and they're working on their recommendation. So once we get their final recommendation for the foundation, then we'll know how much the foundational cost, and then we'll know how much we have to spend on the, the upper portion based on the budget that you guys provided. So that's where we're at with that. And that should be sometime this week, I think, is what the emails are saying, back and forth.
I'm sorry, I didn't-
Sometime this week, I think they'll have that recommendation completed. So, that's moving forward. Any other questions?
No, I guess I don't, if anybody else.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Nick. Next on the agenda is, I just wanted to mention a couple of things, or one thing, I guess. We wanted to schedule a work session for the council, and we're looking at the week of April twenty-fourth, possibly Tuesday or Thursday, is that right, Joan?
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, or Thursday, the twenty-seventh, probably five-thirty.
What dates, what days are them, Joan?
Tuesday, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, or Thursday, the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, that's good to think.
I don't know what it looks like.
April's kind of rough for me, I mean, I can try to attend that, I would prefer something when, you know, it's in May. But if you guys want to go ahead, I can try to make it work.
What's the best time of day for you, is that like a bad time, or?
I mean, five-thirty, five-thirty's fine if I can arrange it.
If you can, right, right.
Would be better during the day?
Well, if it's at five-thirty, that'd be fine, what, how long are you, how long does work session last?
Maybe an hour, hour and a half.
In my case, it'd probably be better, and I don't know what you guys are doing during the day, but I can take, you know, time off of work and do two hours during the day, and that won't be an issue, so.
We, in the past, we, in the past, we haven't had them at noon and stuff, so.
As long as it works, and you think it'll work with Counselor Gorder and Counselor Taves, then that's fine with me, so.
Sure, okay. You'll probably send out an email to everybody, so.
Okay, we'll try, we'll try for April twenty-fifth at noon. We'll see what everyone else thinks.
Do you know if there's something else I was going to mention, or? I can't think of anything.
You did say you did.
Oh, the, oh, the West Central, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the other thing I was going to mention is that we've gotten a contract from West Central Sanitation. It's a pretty simple contract, it refers back to the 2011 contract we had with Mathiason, so nothing's really changed from what Mathiason has been doing and so forth. But there are some issues in there that we'd like to clarify before we agree to adopt the, or the contract. So we're going to kind of table that for the work session, and it'll probably come up on next month's meeting, so. Okay, next item on the agenda is the police report, and we have Ryan here to give us an update and, I don't know, I guess you aren't going to discuss the monthly report, right?
No, I don't know any of the details for the-
I don't know if any of the council has any questions on the monthly report, police report, or anything, so. And Ryan just wants to update us on a grant-
Yes.
-grant application to Polaris.
Yep, so I earlier gave some handouts for you guys, you should have received them. Where are they? Okay, so, starting, it was April first, it was due. Last summer, one of the issues over the last couple of summers, I personally have noticed as one of your law enforcement officers, is the golf carts and the ATVs are kind of a, how do I word it, a toboggan, just kind of a, it's got its issues, and we always get complaints and things like that. On a law enforcement end, one of the easiest ways to enforce something is to make sure that the public is aware of the rules and the requirements. So I found through some grant writing and finds, Yamaha actually, not Polaris, but through Yamaha, they have an annual grant application where you can request for ATVs and other off-road items. Cities or say like state parks and things like that that allow for them to drive on their roads and things. You can apply for signage and other items. So I pre, ahead of time, due to its due date, put in a grant for some signage for the city of Starbuck that would have our city map with the allotted and allowed roads for where the golf carts and ATVs are allowed to drive, along with on the other side of it would be our city ordinance and rules and regulations for the ATVs and golf carts for the city of Starbuck. And then attached is a couple of estimates for what it would cost. The grant that I applied for was $2,000. I haven't heard back whether or not it was approved or not, but I'm asking for the city to, whether it does get approved or does not, maybe we look into still pursuing this. I think getting some signage up for a golf cart guest in the summertime would be a great idea.
Is there any requirement to share cost, or, or is it just a straight-out grant?
It was just a straight grant, but I had to put like what it would go to. So with the estimates, there was a couple of different options. The cheapest one was like $900, and it's for a three-by-four metal sign that we would have to get our own, like four-by-four post and like you win like a state park, you know, put it in the post and you'd staple it on there. Otherwise, there was another one, I believe it went up to about $3,100, and that would be for four signs, and basically that it's for the, it comes in a frame and everything like that. So the other part of this is there was a business in town, being that it was through Yamaha, they were willing to donate a little bit of money to help pay for some costs as long as we were to credit them, you know, with their donation and stuff like that. So that's really what I got. The locations, we were hoping, at least on our end, we thought for them to be placed would be down by Dairy Queen to prevent, kind of as like a last sign so that it doesn't allow anyone to drive up on that main street sidewalk, and it would kind of be the last reminder, so everyone goes over on First Street. And then we were hoping on the south side towards City Beach, in that area where people tend to always take their golf cart and cut on that bike trail there, find some way to put it either there or in City Park. So, yeah, I'm just giving you the info and asking that, you know, if the grant doesn't, you know, get approved through Yamaha, that the city would still think it's a worthwhile idea, and we figure out some way to pay for it.
If we do get the grant, does Yamaha require like their logo or anything like that?
Yes, they do.
Are you guys also going to put the Starbuck Police Department logo on it?
Yes, that's our plan.
Obviously, we wouldn't do the Yamaha logo if we didn't get the grant?
Yeah, if we didn't get the grant.
Would the local business still want to-
If they were to contribute, we would want to give them a little bit of, it was Minnewaska Marine.
Okay.
So, because it means that they are a local Yamaha dealer, we had to actually get like a letter from them saying that they support this project, so.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, you know, there's a lot of people that aren't, that go right past the Dairy Queen-
Yes.
And on these newer golf carts that are going thirty miles an hour, and, you know, kids getting around the corner-
Yep.
-on the third street there, and, yep, I totally agree. Hopefully it saves some time on your end.
Yeah, I don't know, if you're looking for approval tonight or anything, but, or maybe we'll just wait and see with the grant, if we get the grant.
Let's see what happens with the grant, and, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan.
Of course.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is water and sewer, Randy Peterson.
Just have one thing for you tonight, lift station number four, the one that's down on the corner down here, the backside of the campground. We keep having, one of the pumps keeps plugging. It's, we pulled it today, and I looked at the name tag and called in for a quote to get a new one to replace it. Turns out it's an original pump from when the station was built, it's twenty-seven years old. So it still works and everything, it's just, I think, the seals and that are all worn, so there's bigger gaps, so it just pulls the rags in, and the rags get stuck in the impeller. We're pulling it probably once a week, every other week, once a month, it kind of depends, but I think it's time that we should probably look at replacing that one. The pump we replaced last month, or, yeah, last month from the main lift station, that was also twenty-seven years old. So they've been hanging in there pretty well for us, considering. The quote for the new one for this one is $9,733, so they're not cheap, but they seem to be a pretty good quality pump.
You can't fix them or anything, I suppose.
Well, you, you can, but it's a thirty-year-old pump, so-
Yeah, I did get that.
-any money you stick into it, I think is kind of not worth it. And that's the same thing the rep said, I talked to him when I was at the school in St. Cloud. When we were looking at replacing, replacing the other one, we actually had the replacement, but to see if it would be worth sending in, and they were saying if it's, you know, if it's over ten years old probably, or twelve years old, it's not worth sticking a whole lot of money in, because they get a lot of wear from sand on the impellers and everything else, so.
Is ten to twelve years the typical longevity of?
Well, it, it's hard to say, you know, you could have a brand-new one in and get a lightning strike, and it could get fried the first week it's in there. I believe it's, don't quote me, but it's either, it's one year or a couple, a couple of years. I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but yes, there is a warranty. So I guess I would like approval to order a pump, and the one that's in there then, we'll just put it in the shop and have it for a backup, just in case something does happen. The other one that is in the pit, I would guess is probably right around that same age also. I don't remember ever putting a new one in there, and that's almost twenty years, so. Should start somewhere, nothing is getting any cheaper, that's for sure.
I don't think we should do it, because switching it and the whole was coming up.
I make a motion, we move forward with replacing the lift station pump at McCrombie.
I'll sign that motion. And then there's no issue like if storing it for a couple of years, you know, having it on backup in case something?
It'll just sit in the shop, we've got a few other ones, like the one where we made two pump, we took two old pumps that were broken, we took a top of one and a bottom of one, and we put them together, you know. Something like that could possibly happen with one of these, you never know. It's just, you hang on to them and you let them sit there, and after so many years, they end up going for scrap iron. If you don't ever end up needing them, you hope you never need them, so.
Should maybe start a museum in Starbucks of all the old pumps.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Randy.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is, it says Doug Noise, but I don't think you're Doug Noise.
Doug's not here.
Casey's right below him.
Oh, yes, Casey's right below you, you're covering both.
I, I don't have a monthly report for you or anything fire department-related, but I have the, a request to talk about our pension plan. I'm, I'm the treasurer of the Relief Association. If, if you're not familiar with what we do, kind of two parts. We raise money, do the street dance, donate it back to the city to buy equipment, things like that, in our general fund. But we also manage the pension fund, which is public money. It's where all the state aid that the, the state gives the city for our, for our retirement. Anyway, it's a lot to, it's a lot to handle for part, you know, part-time volunteers, and the state of Minnesota has a program through PERA which your city employees use the same pension system. But it's specifically for, it's a statewide volunteer firefighter plan. It's a separate plan for volunteer firefighters, and there's, there's a lot of good reasons to consider moving towards it. And I'm not really here today to get approval to move towards it. The, the first step in doing it is to have a cost analysis done, and basically what happens is our secretary, or myself, I'm the treasurer, our secretary is Mike Solon, and he's just newly elected, so. He and I would probably, and, and the board would handle, working with the city, I think Joan would probably handle this. But basically, we need to put together a, a document and a bunch of, answer a bunch of questions to PERA. Let me see here, it's a request for a cost analysis to join the SVF plan. Basically, they look at how much money we have, what our benefit level is, what our, you know, liabilities to our members is, and they determine whether or not we're in a position to be able to join their plan at a certain level. We cannot decrease our benefit level when we join, and we cannot go backwards on our vesting schedules, so. You know, there's certain things that have to line up. But basically, once they complete the cost analysis, to see if we- to see if we, you know, how we would, how it would look to join, then, then we have the opportunity to talk about it, they'll actually come meet, Para would come meet with us, um, and this, and the council or whoever wants to be involved. Um, and then at that time, we decide if it actually makes sense for us to, to join, but um, the reason that I, that I really think this is a good idea is, um, it really has to do with the um responsibility of managing the money, like we, we have a fiduciary responsibility, in fact, you two probably have it too, you're supposed to be on the board, Gary and, and uh, and Joan, um, sh- you're supposed to be part of our Relief Association Board, um, but we, we all have a fiduciary responsibility to manage that money and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, and really we just, it doesn't really make sense for us to be doing it, especially when there's an opportunity to, um, you know, join a plan that's a little more thought out and um, the other, the other part of it is, is we spend about five thousand dollars out of our special fund every year uh with an accounting firm to do a state audit. Um, that's five thousand dollars a year that we could leave in that special fund to grow and, and increase our benefit level. So I, I think it looks like something that um takes a lot of burden off of our locally here, off of our fire department, we can be, spend our time doing something, you know, probably more fun and, you know, more useful to, to help the community. Um, and I think it, it, it's a way to probably get a better, better pension for the, for the guys that are on the department, so. What I'm looking for is just uh approval to be able to do this cost analysis and get that part of it moving.
Is that something they do or is there a cost to?
No.
Having a cost?
There is, there is no cost uh to do that, that's, that's a, a free thing. Um, I've got some documents here, I didn't make copies, I can, I can, I can get that to you, it's all on their website though. It's uh, the Para SVF plan, it's called. Um, but yeah, so it, there's no cost to it, it's, see, I have a copy of the form here, it's like three pages and we're gonna probably rely on our accountant at CDS to give us most of it, or the state auditor, it's, it, it's really just the, the numbers of, you know, who's on the department, how long they've been there, what our benefit level is and they take it and I don't think it's a real lengthy process, but we have to, as far as a timeline, if we decided to do this, I should get into that. Um, we have to have the cost analysis done by July fifteenth. And then we have, I think, once they get it done, we have a hundred and twenty days to approve it. And the goal is that for January one of twenty twenty-four, then we would move our pension to, to the, to the Para plan.
If you go with Para, do they, then they manage the plan?
They manage all the pensions, if somebody retires, they apply.
Takes the burden off of you.
Yeah, they invest the money, so the money gets invested with the State Board of Investment, uh, which is where we have most of our money already, so it's really not that different, but they, they basically manage the funds and we don't have to have that responsibility to decide where to put it and, you know, it, and, and like I say, it's, um, it's a few years ago, actually before I was involved, but we got to the point where we were over five hundred thousand dollars in, in assets and the audit process, uh, once you hit that five hundred thousand, gets to be a lot more lengthy and a lot more expensive. So that's part of the motivation, we're in, we're in that, and once you get there, you're stuck there, so. Um, like I said, it's like their estimate for twenty twenty, it'd be twenty twenty-two's books, we're working on our audit now, it's like six thousand dollars, well, our, the state aid that we got from the state was, I think, twenty-six thousand dollars, so we're spending a pretty large percent of the aid that we get from the state, just to make sure we're taking care of the money. We don't, we don't have to do that, so, you know, five thousand, you know, our vesting schedule right now, we're at twenty years for twenty-five guys. If you figure, put five thousand dollars a year in that account every year for the twenty years for, you know, each guy. Um, it, it turns out to be a quite a bit more money that we could actually pay to the, our uh, our firefighters. Uh, and then, so part of that is, uh, and you guys are familiar with uh, setting the benefit level. Um, it's similar the way, from what I understand, the way, you know, Doug comes and asks for approval for you guys to set the benefit level. That's still your, uh, the, the city council's uh responsibility, um, and that's based on um, you guys making the decision, um, to make sure that there's enough money there um, to, to have whatever benefit level we are and your responsibility for, if there's a shortfall, the city is still on, you know, on the hook for coming up with that, which is the same today.
Yeah.
So, um, but I, you know, we, we, we still exist, um, in the department, you know, we wanna work with you guys to make, you know, it'll be your decision to make if we can increase that benefit level, but, um, I think it's, I think it becomes a lot simpler. That's, that's the benefit to it, so.
Sounds like a win-win uh situation, you know, or?
I have not seen anything that really raises a red flag to me about it. The, the one thing that I, I guess the group, uh, the department has is just, you know, maybe a little bit of taking the local control over and, you know, giving it to something bigger, but in this situation, I think it makes a lot of sense to leverage, you know, Para and somebody that knows what they're doing and that's not really our thing, you know, so.
What, what percentage do you have invested in the state fire relief, uh?
In the, in the SBI.
Yeah.
Right, well, we just had three guys retire, so we've pretty much wiped out what I had, uh, invested locally here, so pretty much all of our, there's like five hundred thousand dollars right now in, in the SBI.
Okay.
Was considerably more than that a year ago, but, um, yeah, so most of it's there, we have a little bit left, it's the ego bank here, but
Okay.
That's, that's the thing is, as the treasurer, I'm supposed to be responsible of putting that money, you know, wherever it needs to be to do the best thing and, uh, it's not, it's not what I know how to do and there's nobody else on the department that, you know,
Yeah.
really wants to be doing it and having that responsibility, so. We have enough things to, to worry about, so this, I think this, like I say, it frees up time, it frees up money to have a better benefit level. It's worth, it's worth a look and that's really all we're.
Sure.
It's all we're really doing today is let's take a look at it and dig into it and do the, do the cost analysis and probably get somebody from Para here. Um, and uh, and then make a decision.
Sure.
The one good thing about this too is, um, from my understanding, it happened about five years, this has been around for, I think since like two thousand nine maybe, maybe older than that, but a few years ago, they made, they, they made a revision to it that once you get in it, you can opt back out. And a lot of departments jumped on it then and no one, from my understanding, no one has gone the other, gone the other way, so there is, there is a way, and I haven't explored that or looked into it, but there is a way for us to revert back to our old pension if we decide we don't like it, so.
Okay.
Like I say, I don't think that'll be the case, but, so.
Well.
I'll make a motion to uh, to fire department to pursue a cost analysis with Para.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion or anything else you wanted to relay or? There's no, no other discussion, uh, uh, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Casey. Okay, uh, is there any discussion on the budget reports for first quarter or? Did you have anything you wanted to?
Um, no, there's not much to say about it, the first quarter, we don't get most of our revenue until later in the year and the only thing that has gone over budget substantially at all is getting the pay loader repaired. And that was, you know, six thousand dollars that put us over budget for vehicle repairs, but had to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay. Um. Uh, we'll move on to new business and uh, we wanna discuss the part-time seasonal salaries for twenty twenty-three. I think it's on the last page of your handout.
Well, from what I see, it looks pretty fair.
Yeah, I mean, due to inflation and difficulty in getting help, uh, you know, uh, I think fifty cents or a dollar an hour is not a big jump. I don't know what you think, Dean, uh, but.
I think that's very appropriate.
Yeah. So.
You looking for a motion?
Uh, yeah, unless uh you have any suggestions or changes or?
I mean, you can always adjust it further in the future if it uh needs to be, but I'll make a motion to uh, um, change the part-time seasonal salaries for twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilman Christensen to approve the uh, the uh salary, salaries for lifeguards, part-time summer help uh in Hobo Park this year for twenty twenty-three. Seconded by Councilwoman Bockel. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to discuss waiving the community center fee for the beautification committees. Mystery Dinner Theater in May, proceeds will go towards flowers for the city, so normally we, there's a fee for nonprofits to use the community center, but uh, in this case, it's for the benefit of the city and uh, improve the, you know, improve the looks of our city and so forth, so, um.
Well, I make a motion, we just don't charge them.
Okay.
I'll second the motion to waive the community center fee for the beautification committees this summer.
Okay. So I have a motion from Councilwoman Bockel to waive the uh community center fee for beautification committees. Mystery Dinner Theater in May, uh, seconded by Councilman uh Christensen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is the treatment for Starry Stonewort and Mill Foil in the Marina for twenty twenty-three. And uh, I would uh make a motion that we table that for the uh work session. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve a amendment for Mendat Grant Agreement Number One O Three Twenty Six Forty Three, which adds a time extension for the final payment for the airport zoning ordinance update. And that extension has been approved by Mendat and uh, uh, we just have to approve it, right?
Right, approve and sign it.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we have to sign it, so.
Can you give us a small review about this?
Yeah, um, basically, we received a grant in two thousand eighteen for um having a new zorni- zoning ordinance done for the airport and we were reimbursed for some of those funds. But there was a final payment to our engineer we should have been reimbursed for and prior employees didn't send it in. So we asked for an amendment and they gave it to us, so it's kind of a formality now, but it'll allow us to recoup some of that money.
Receiving money rather than spending.
Yes, we're gonna be getting money, it's a good thing.
All right, I'll make a motion to second amendment eight oh one, who the Mendat Grant Agreement One O Three Twenty Six Forty Three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion uh by Councilman Christensen to approve amendment for Mendat Grant Agreement One O Three Twenty Six Forty Three, adding a time extension for the final payment for the airport zoning ordinance update, seconded by Councilwoman Bockel. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, last item on the agenda is a, a quote for a programmable keypad for community center entrance. And uh, I think you have that in front of you, the Midwest Lock and Door Company?
What uh software do they use to change the code?
I don't know, I don't have that.
Is that for the front door?
It's for the front door, so we could have a code to give out instead of, you know, having to be here in person to open the door. That, whoever gets in would still have to have the key to unlock it for anybody else coming afterwards, but at least they could get in, so.
I'm just concerned about, you know, the ease of being able to change the code on the door if something does come up or, you know,
I mean, it's.
every couple weeks or something like that, just.
Right, and it's supposed to be easy, it's supposed to be like, um, similar to a VRBO thing where they change it, the code after each person leaves. But um, we haven't seen it in action.
Yeah, that was my concern too, was uh, you know, having that code out there for, you know, everybody, but.
Well, it gets changed, I mean, not, we wouldn't keep the same code. We'd have to change it, but, yeah.
So.
And then I guess the clarification on the first two items I mentioned was you have a keypad controller and then electric strike, each at about six hundred dollars. What's the difference between these two items?
I couldn't tell you, I'd have to talk to our technician, he came out and looked at the door and put together the quote for us, we just got. So I mean, we can certainly ask him more, but I couldn't tell you.
I just wonder if maybe getting a second quote might be in order, this seems kind of high for a digital code lock, but.
Yeah, I honestly don't know too much about it, so.
Do, do we know of any other uh places at uh, any other locksmiths and?
Uh, no, off my head.
This is the one we use.
Other than Midwest?
It's not Midwest. Oh. It's Zach something or other, he did key locks for our house. Okay, these are the people that do the rest of our door locks for the community center.
And they do the BF too, this kid.
What, what's it called, did you say? I'll look it up, I haven't figured it out, but um, that's probably in the neighborhood.
Hmm?
I said that's probably in the neighborhood for the keypad.
Yeah, yes.
It's roughly about the same price that the school has to pay for their lock.
Yeah.
And it's the same property, so.
Yeah.
The Midwest Lock and Doors, though, okay. Okay, well, I think then if these other institutions within our community use it, I don't see why that would be something we'd have a second guess then at this point.
And maybe that's what the electric strike is, maybe it's a pop that they use.
Oh, that would make sense, yeah, yeah. So you wouldn't need the code, one person be able to have access with a card.
And then you can cut that card off immediately. I don't, I don't know, I'm just. Yeah.
It'd be interesting to see.
In your old lock picking days, you don't remember that?
Back in the day, you didn't even have to lock that door, Mary.
Don't I know.
So, are you still recommending we get a second quote?
No, I, now that I know that, um, in schools and, um, yeah, I think that this.
We use them.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Would you make a motion to accept this?
Yeah.
Yep, I'll make a motion to pursue the Midwest, Midwest Lock and Door, um, installation on a digital keypad.
Okay, and I'll second that then.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Christensen to approve the Midwest Lock and Door uh quote for a uh programmable keypad for the front door, seconded by Councilwoman Bockel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. And I make a motion that we adjourn. Thank everybody, so.